Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, September 21st, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt presiding. Also present are Councilors Kate McAllister, participating remotely, Deb Rule, Andy Groat, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. Counselor Joel Aspiro is absent this evening. We'll now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Of the United States of America.
First, this evening, we have employee recognition and presentation of certificates in our Infrastructure and Development Services Division and Police Department. At this time, we'll start with IDS. And I'll call our building official Christine Coleman to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to recognize or for us to recognize our newest inspectors achievement. First, I want to tell you a little bit about what that is. So the state of Idaho requires that building inspectors be certified through the ICC for the inspections that they perform. The ICC is the International Code Council, which is the organization that develops all of our codes and publishes them. So that includes building code, fire code, and many others. So to be certified to be an inspector in just the building code. This is an example of the book that contains the code sections. And that's the volumes that you have to become pretty intimately familiar with to earn the certification. So I would like to introduce you to our inspector Pete, and I'd love to have him come up and join us. This is Pete Scan. And he joined us August 1st as our newest inspector, and on August 22nd, he passed the exam to earn his Building Plans Examiner certificate, which covers all of the inspections plus plans examiner. So we are super excited and lucky to have them.
Congratulations, Pete.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the Police Department Certification Presentations. If Police Chief Corey Kuhn will please come to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm learning to delegate, so watch this.
All right, good evening. First off, I'd like to invite Officer Bard, come join me up here. Today, on behalf of Sandpoint Police Department, I want to recognize Officer Bard's accomplishments. He was hired full-time with the city of Sandpoint on August 31st, 2021, after spending some time with us as a reserve officer. Prior to that, Officer Bard has completed our 16-week field training program and recently graduated the Idaho Peace Officer Standards and Training Academy in Meridian on August 5th, 2022. Today, we recognize Officer Bard for his hard work and dedication in completing the requirements for and receiving his basic patrol officer certificate. So congratulations.
Congratulations, Officer Bard.
We gotta get the photo up in there somewhere. Next, we're gonna have Sergeant Skyler Ziegler come up.
Call up Donald Little. Donald Little has been with the department since December 2020. Prior to that, he served with the Seattle Police Department for about 12 years, and then he decided to join our community. Since that time, he's functioned in patrol and has recently been assigned as our School Resource Officer for the city of Sandpoint's High School. And he has now met the IDAPA rules for his intermediate certificate through the state of Idaho.
Congratulations, Officer Little.
He did want me to explain that he's dressed according to his football coaching outfit. So he ran from football to here, so we appreciate both that, both the fact that he's helping coach and that he ran here for this. The last one we'll call up right now is Lieutenant Chamberlain.
So I have the opportunity and the pleasure to present Officer Kale White. Kale White is actually receiving his advanced post certificate. So as far as patrolman goes, there are four levels of certification. Advanced is the second highest. It's basic, then intermediate, then advanced. So Kale not only has shown that he's met the requirements for trading hours, which is a minimum of 800, which he superseded. He also has a bachelor's degree, and he's been with the police department since May of 2016 and then reserved with us a little bit before that. So that meets the requirements for his advanced certificate. On top of that, he has shown that it's not just a piece of paper. He's done more. He's taken on leadership roles as a field training officer. He also is a breath testing specialist for our department. So thank you, Officer White.
Congratulations, Officer White. And finally, I'd like to ask Patrolman Kale White to come forward again and invite his wife Cassidy to join him up at the podium for a very special presentation. I'm honored to be presenting a letter of commendation and life-saving award to Patrolman White for his outstanding crisis intervention response and decision-making that saved the life of one of our young community members this past weekend. On September 16th, 2022, shortly after 0100 hours, Sandpoint officers were dispatched to a report of a suicidal male near the kayak launch near the Panada Theater. Responding officers were told he was going to tie a noose and jump off the kayak launch. Upon arrival, Officer White located the gentleman holding onto a pillar over the water with a makeshift noose tied around his neck. For over 30 minutes, Officer White engaged with this gentleman, seeking to build rapport in order to coax him off the pillar and back onto the dock. During their conversation, he tried to get Officer White and others to leave so he could kill himself in peace. Officer White was able to persuade him to sit on the dock. However, he was unable to convince him to remove the noose from around his neck. Due to the connection Officer White was able to make with this gentleman, he was able to get close enough to grab his legs and support his weight, preventing him from jumping and hanging himself. Officer White continued to hold him up while other officers responded and assisted with cutting the noose. Officer White's calm demeanor, utilization of his crisis intervention training, and quick action saved this young man's life and allowed him to get the help and services that he needed. For his actions, Officer Kale White has hereby presented this letter of commendation and award.
You won't mess his hair up, like mine. Mayor, if you want to step in here. Nobody wants my glasses. Thank you, Kale. You know, it's, I'll just say something really quick, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna run because I gotta go officiate powder puff. One thing to the next, that's what we do. You know, I truly appreciate Officer White's, Officer White, but we have 25 other guys that in the same situation, I know that he would say the same thing. Anybody else, any one of our officers in that same situation would have taken on that same mantle and done those exact same things. So in this time, it was his call, and it was his time to act. And I appreciate his willingness to put himself in harm's way and to respond to those calls.
Thank you, Chief. I have a proclamation to read this evening for National Service Dog Month. I understand that Lily Mitsui, Mitsui, is that, do I see that right? Okay, with Canine Companions along with volunteer puppy raiser Holly and Toffee and Puppy, a Puppy in Training are here with us this evening to accept the proclamation. If you'd please come forward. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act allows public accommodations for service animals, which are defined as dogs that are individually trained to do work or perform tasks for people with disabilities. And whereas before being paired with a human, each service dog requires months of training and practice. And whereas before dogs are put through their paces as potential companions, they must be raised in an environment that is conducive to learning. And whereas across America, hundreds of canines are raised by volunteer puppy raisers each year who agree to provide a safe environment, attend classes, teach manners and basic commands, provide for food, veterinary expenses and transportation, and agree to give up the puppy after 18-month time period, which I imagine can be pretty difficult. And whereas Canine Companions is a nonprofit organization that enhances the lives of people with disabilities by providing expertly trained service dogs and ongoing support to ensure quality partnerships. Whereas Canine Companions, through their network of trained service dogs, helps individuals live their lives to the fullest by providing best-in-class training, cutting-edge research, and a deeply committed community of support. And whereas the residents in Sandpoint, Idaho believe in the joyful transformative power of the human canine connection. And whereas the residents, excuse me, and whereas the National Service Dog Month aims to educate our community about the benefits of service dogs and the laws protecting them. Now, therefore, in recognition of service dogs and the adults and children in our community with disabilities, I, Shelby Ronstadt, Mayor of Sandpoint, Idaho, do hereby recognize September as National Service Dog Month and encourage all citizens to celebrate genuine service dogs and be respectful to the adults, children, and veterans who lead more independent lives because of them.
Thank you. I want to thank you very much for supporting Canine Companions. True service dogs are, give independence to people beyond your wildest dreams. And I thank you for doing that for us. Thank you.
Are there any announcements from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to let everybody know, this upcoming Saturday, September 24th, the Bonner General Health Foundation is excited to put on our first annual Find Your Strength 5K superhero-themed 1K and after-party that'll all start and finish at City Beach. We've got registration that'll kick off 4:00 to 7:00 at Trinity at City Beach on Friday, and you'll be able to register last minute up until about 9:30 in the morning on Saturday, the 24th. The funds raised at this race are going to go to purchase an exoskeleton. The exoskeleton is a state-of-the-art wearable robotic that helps with the rehabilitation of people who've had strokes, injury, multiple sclerosis, cerebral palsy, and much more. If Bonner General is able to get the funds for this, we would be the only rehabilitation or hospital in the state of Idaho to have this piece of technology. The next closest one is in Winatchee. So we'd really like to see everybody come out right now. We are limiting it to 300 5K participants at this point, so please come to registration on Friday and Saturday morning. Also have some kudos as well. Kudos to the 7B Board Shop and the Bonner County Skate Park Association for their King of the Concrete this weekend as well, too. It's amazing to see how many, how many of our kids from this area and outside the area and what an inclusive event that they have every single time. I know as a young man, when I was skateboarding, going to the skate park was a little scary. You'd get heckled or laughed out of there, and now you see these kids. As my son says, it is a home away from home from some of the kids that are down there. Another kudos, the 7B Baggers pulled off a very successful cornhole tournament on Second Street and raised over $2,000 for quarter-appointed special advocates in Sandpoint. And lastly, sorry, I've got a mouthful this evening. Thank you to either Parks and Rec, or Austin, or Maeve, or Jennifer, or whoever. We got the potholes fixed down at City Beach just in time for our run, as well as we had a few citizens bring it up here in the past couple of days. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you for that as well. I would add to that, the pothole on Lake Street, just as you're turning off highway, too. Thank you for filling that, Amanda. Counsel? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, so Friday, we had our first home football game, and the attendance was one in which I hadn't ever seen before. The estimate is about 3,500 people. That's approximately a third of our population in town. So it was, it was a great celebration for a homecoming and a home, homecoming and a home game. As well as, I'd really like to thank Maeve for Saturday for providing us an opportunity to celebrate her brother with a very difficult workout that I think really got to the heart of all of us. So thank you very much, Maeve.
Great, thank you. Staff, announcements?
Just a couple of quick announcements tonight, Mr. Mayor. We have a survey that is already very popular. They tend to be our most popular. It's about the dogs. So we held a kickoff meeting Monday evening for design for the waterfront water access dog park at War Memorial Field back behind the grandstands. There've been a couple of questions because we posted this up with our concept, our adopted concept for War Memorial Field, and that adopted concept does not show the pickleball courts there, and the pickleball courts are staying, so the dog park will be around the pickleball courts. But for those who were not able to attend the community meeting on Monday evening, we have an online survey, and you can access it off your Engage Sandpoint app. It is on our website. It is on our Facebook page and on the Engage Sandpoint website. So all of those different venues, the surveys there, it'll take like three or four minutes to fill out, and it closes on September 30th. So get your comments in about the dog park.
Do you know how many participants have, we have so far?
How many we have? But just because we're using, in this case, which is unusual for us, we're using the consultants' system because they launched it actually at the town hall. So it's not on our open town hall system, so I can't see, but I'm willing to bet we'll be approaching that 800, 900 number we tend to see when we have surveys about dogs. But with that, we are launching another survey tomorrow and a third survey on Friday. So we are full-on back into community input these days. So the survey that will be up by tomorrow is on snow and ice control and removal. So we have questions. Our policy on snow management, snow removal, will be up there, and we're asking citizens for feedback. It's been about four years since we did any changes to our policy, so we're revisiting that again. And for those who are interested in participating in the conversation in person, we will be having a workshop at our next council meeting. So October 5th, there will be a workshop on snow removal. So this gives people an opportunity to give some feedback in advance of that workshop as well. And then finally, on Friday, we will be launching a third survey that is specific to the Jim E. Russell Sports Complex at Travers Park to inform our operations planning for that. We will be back to council at the second meeting in October with the final design for that project. We're pretty well there, and we're there now vetting all of the pricing so we can look at some phasing elements to this, too. So what's in phase one, what's in phase two? What I can confirm absolutely in phase one, the sports court, four courts, four tennis courts, that can also be 16 pickleball courts, is definitely in phase one, as was promised, along with the courtyard. And I think the community is going to be really excited in what else we have managed to get into this design, so.
Great. And I assume restrooms are in that phase one as well?
Restrooms are in phase one, and the restrooms will serve both the indoor court facility as well as have outdoor access. So they'll be serving the skate park area. Right now, we don't have restrooms up close to that area, and they'll serve the fields as well. So I believe it's three that go indoors. So you could go indoor when the facility's indoors, but you could access from the outside another three restrooms.
Great, thank you. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we'll proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public the opportunity to address the council and myself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will provide that opportunity by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a signup form located by the front door on the table there. And please fill it out, hand it to the clerk up here in the front right of your room, your front right. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, I will ask for public comment. At that time, you'll raise your hand, and you'll be allowed to speak by our clerk. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to council or staff, and please do not approach the dais. Please note, those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. So we gotta simmer down. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone indicated that they would like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Molly O'Reilly.
Thank you for this opportunity. In 2001, the city council asked me to be involved with figuring out the sidewalk system and walkability in Sandpoint, and who wanted to walk where, who needed to walk where. My most memorable meeting that year was with the clients at Panhandle Special Needs. I walked into a room and developmentally disabled adults, many of them in wheelchairs, were there, and they had an agenda. We cannot cross Pine Street. They wanted me to leave understanding the importance of making Pine Street crossable. We now have sidewalk on the north side. In the seven blocks between Boyer and Division are two curb ramps. They're at the park, very, very appropriately so. But my 22 years with sidewalks have taught me that if you don't have curb ramps on the first sidewalk, you're not going to get them on the other one, across. When somebody on the south side is required to put in sidewalk, they'll say, hey, the city didn't intend people to cross here. They don't have a cross curb ramp here. I'm not going to put in a curb ramp. That costs extra money. So now, we still have a terrible problem with crossing Pine. You have to walk out into the street. If you're on the north side, turn south, walk along the street, then you're at a corner. But you can't just turn and face the traffic in a curb ramp so people know, oh, this is where people cross. Yes. And sidewalks last 30 to 50 years, so we have a multi-generational problem here. This project was not done the way it would have been if the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee were still active and advising the committee on things like this. They would have caught this right of way. The Pedestrian Advisory Committee, prior to 2010 at some point, walked Olive Pine with Cody Van Dyke and identified where curb ramps should go. I doubt that the city still has that information, and it may still not be relevant. But without those curb ramps on the first side, the north side, the city-built side, we, we still don't cross Pine Street safely. And several years ago, the city staff deactivated the pedestrian bicycle advisory committee. I expect them to come to you and ask you to take that committee out of code. I encourage you rather to say, reactivate this committee. We have a big project on Division. Engineers do not learn sidewalks and bicycles in engineering school. It's just now starting to be taught. Whoever engineered that sidewalk doesn't walk, didn't know walking, didn't understand what it takes to get there. Please reactivate the committee and try to find some money to fix this. Thanks.
Thank you, Miss O'Reilly. Appreciate those comments. Madam Clerk?
We have no one else who wishes to speak during public forum, Mr. Mayor.
All right. There's no one else who would like to speak that will conclude the public forum portion of the meeting this evening? Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,819,812 reflecting $1,044,432.27 for regular payables and $775,368.85 for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved.
Removed.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groat?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under old business this evening is consideration of approval of a six-month extension to the city's memorandum of understanding with the Independent Highway District. And now, I will now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stackleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are requesting a six-month extension to our memorandum of understanding with Independent Highway District, which spells out revenue sharing. But it also spells out in the attachments section of the memorandum the responsibilities of the city and IHD relative to maintenance, to encroachments, to master planning, to franchise agreements, a number of different areas. We've engaged in discussions with Independent Highway District about streamlining some of these processes back and forth, and so are in the process of working through that, but also need to have our attorneys review this. And this agreement, this MOU was put into place following a Supreme Court decision about a case between city of Sandpoint and Independent Highway District. So this will also give us more time to bring our current attorney group up to speed and for them to do a full review. We're also in discussions about the revenue sharing and some potential changes to revenue sharing between the city and Independent Highway District. So the six-month extension continues operating the way that we have been since 2017, when this was put in place and gives us some time with an end date to work through some renegotiation of this agreement.
Okay. Does council have any questions? All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay. I'd entertain a motion for approval of the resolution for amendment number one to the memorandum of understanding with an independent highway district. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Groth.
Yes.
Motion passes. First, under new business is a presentation kicking off the downtown waterfront design competition. I will now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton once again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my last item for the night. As council will recall, the city has a concept in our Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the downtown waterfront. And so specifically, our area along Sand Creek, as well as the Farman's Landing property that the city purchased in 2016. In addition to that, we also have a master plan concept for City Beach as well. We have budgeted and planned to move forward with the design, moving from concept to actual design for the downtown waterfront this year. And a traditional approach, the way we would usually address this and the way cities address most design efforts would be to issue an RFQ for design services and then to select an appropriate responder with the capabilities to provide this service. Another more holistic approach that provides for broader community participation, greater design team interest from a larger area, and addresses the community concern for influencing private development in the area along anything that we're improving as a city, and ensures a design that uniquely fits the goals, history, and character of Sandpoint would be to, instead of doing your typical RFQ process, to actually hold a design competition. We've been recently very privileged to be put in contact with Don Stasny, who is with us online tonight. Don is a world-renowned architect, master planner, and design competition manager. And we had to start with trying to sell Don on Sandpoint because he's retired from most of these projects. And I, I did include in your council packet some background of the, the types of projects, the kinds of projects and efforts that Don has been involved with, not only across the country, but internationally. And I'm really pleased to say that after about a fifty-minute conversation, Don looked at us and said, well, I'm sold. You hooked me. I'm hooked. I'm curious about this project, and I think we can really do something great. So Don is with us online tonight to address the kickoff and to talk to council and the community a little bit more about what a design competition looks like, what it is, the opportunities for the community to participate, and also to talk a little bit about how through this process too, we might be able to effectively influence design that we're seeing in downtown. We've heard the concerns for the community. We had a historic design standards committee that met several years ago after we lost the buildings at Bridge and First because the community became concerned at that time about what type of development we might see in downtown and would it fit the historical character of the community and really fit into our downtown. We have put together a panel of fifteen key stakeholders and advisors through working with Don on what type of representation we should have to first begin discussions with this process. And Don will talk to you a little bit about what that looks like as well. The stakeholder group includes citizens and property owners representing downtown businesses, several properties downtown, nearly all of the properties that are under development along the waterfront and some others along First Avenue, again, to influence what we see for design into our downtown. Citizens at large, liaisons from our Planning and Zoning Commission, Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission, as well as the former Historic Design Standards Work Group, the Kalispel Tribe, and other community leaders. There will be a series of three workshops, which will be kicking off next Tuesday. And I included in your packet an overview of the topics we'll be talking about at each of those workshops. But with that said, I want to hand it over to Don to really have an opportunity to discuss this with you and answer any questions you might have about this process. Don, it's all yours.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor, Council, it's an honor to be here, even though it's on a screen. The story about what the both pandemic and Zooming has done. We just completed the work on a national Cold War memorial up in Wisconsin. And it was international. There were four finalist teams, one from Japan, one from Jordan, one from Italy, and one from that other foreign country, LA. And we did it all electronically, all by Zoom. And the biggest challenge, I think, wasn't necessarily finding great designers. It was trying to understand the time zones and what we were putting people through in different review, review sessions. Anyway, we were able to pull it off. It was done for the Pritzker family as part of the Pritzker Military Museum and Library. The other thing I would like to say is that, first of all, I apologize for not being there yet, but I will be there next week to really get a sense of the land and, and what is there. It's been described to me. It's a, it's a challenge, but it is also a great opportunity, I think. If you look at my resume, you will see that I've kind of worked all over. What is more important, I believe, is where I come from. I grew up in a small town in southern Oregon called Mullen, which is a small Czech community, where the whole time I was growing up, it was population five ninety-four. And I was back there not too long ago, and there's still a sign out front says five ninety-four. So the idea of growing up in a small community served me well as I went, began to deal with bigger cities in that I had an innate understanding of community, of what it takes to, to make a community, kind of where the hot buttons are, what you have to respect, and what you have to honor. And so coming into your community, I bring that with me. And, and I can honestly say it is an honor to work with you or to look forward to working with all of you as we go forward on this venture. Jennifer spoke a little bit about a design competition relatively, relative to a direct solicitation and of certain, of a designer. What the design competition does for you is that it gives you different ideas to look at. So instead of one single designer putting forth a plan that then you modify, you might have three or four different plans that you can look at, and you begin to compare them and, and choose the best things out of each plan. The cost of the competition is usually about the same as you would pay a single designer to get you to conceptual design. We, as Jennifer also said, we are beginning this process to develop the competition, looking at some very specific products that we need. One is the competition process itself. And we are recommending, however, this will be subject to our advisory committee, that we use a two-stage competition. This is what we have done in the past. Stage one is where we ask for credentials of design teams and examples of their work. And that will be advertised and open to whoever wants to submit. However, we will also suggest with that that we are looking for teams. We are looking for people who are designers. We're looking for your standard suspects of architects and landscape architects, but also planners, economists, and people that might be involved, say, for instance, in environmental science or something like that. So that the teams that we eventually ask to participate in stage two of the competition are not kind of singular entities or star designers, but are collaborating groups that can really begin to identify and identify and speak to things greater than design. For instance, economics or sustainability or those, those kinds of elements that will bring about successful development. So the first, some of the work that this, that our advisory committee will do is kind of look at the benefits of a design process and a design competition process and make sure that we are moving in the right direction for Sandpoint. The second thing we will be asking the advisory committee to work on is a design program. What we need to tell the designers as to what our expectations are during the process and what we expect the products to be. This can take a number of different forms, but it is, it is probably more talking about the quality of the environment we are trying to create as opposed to the specifics of the, of the environment we are, we are creating. That does not mean that we won't have specific things like maybe building heights, maybe setbacks, style, theme, kinds of situations. But it will also mean that we'll talk about the spaces in between. And we won't necessarily focus on the objects that might come out of this, but more what the overall context and what the overall environment that is created will be. We also want to make sure that as we ask for these design guidelines or design program elements that we are inclusive. But we all also want to set a very high bar as far as what you as a city expect from development there, whether it's design, whether it's the way it reacts to the street, whether it reacts to the, the public spaces. So that will be what we call the design program. And like I say, it will depend a lot on our advisory committee as to exactly what that eventually ends up being. We've gone all the way from rather specific things to goals to, say, a series of design guidelines. And that will be part of what we bring back to you around the first of the year. The third thing that we will work on is what we call designing the jury or designing the selection process. And that this should not be an elitist kind of situation, but someone where people in the community and specialists that we bring in from outside have equal voice. And how we make up that jury will be dependent on the program that we put forward. So if we put forth a program that has a very strong emphasis on pick something, traffic engineering, then we would make sure that we had a traffic engineer on the jury. But more than likely, it would, we would have people like the economists, ecology experts, watershed experts, as well as the standard suspects of architects, landscape architects, and engineers. And so within our advisory committee, we will work on a description of the jury. Like I said, we really look at it as a design exercise to find the right people who will collaborate, who will cooperate, and will bring their expertise to the table. We like the jury to be equitable and, and bring in as, as many different people as we possibly can. The, we will also be developing at the same time, which will be the package that we bring back to you, an overall budget as to what we are expecting the, the process to cost. And also, within that budget, would be any honorariums that we might pay to competitors and/or, excuse me, and/or jurors. And we will also bring to you a schedule. And the schedule then will be something that, once it is adopted, is adhered to. Very important to get the right amount of time for each stage, for each part of the process to unfold, but not too much. And the reason for this is that you are asking professionals to put forth an awful lot of effort. And what we've found is no matter what the honorarium is, the professionals will give about three to four times more in billable time. The reason being is that it gives them a chance to, to follow certain theories, to develop certain philosophies, and also the, the publication of, of what it is that comes out of it. I believe some of the materials that Jennifer sent to you show some of the final reports that have come out of some of the competitions that we have run. That final report gives you a summary really of how the, the competition was run, how it was managed, what the decisions were, what the jury comments were. But then it also becomes a part of both your fundraising and your, your government actions going forward. So it becomes, it isn't quite as thick as those building codes that were put on the table there at the end. It's quite a bit thinner, but it's the same kind of thing. It becomes, in a way, a bit of a, you're recording a bit of history about the way that, that we might go about it. In working with Jennifer, we've put together this group of fifteen, I think it is Jennifer at this point. And the idea was that this committee or this, this advisory group to start with helps us formulate and gives us a place to talk about these different pieces of the competition, the process, the program, the jury, schedule, and, and the cost. So that when we come back to you towards the end of the year, that that will be an overall proposal to you as to how we would proceed should the competition, should you choose to go ahead with the, with the competition itself, which we believe there should be something that is exciting. It is something that I think that, that we can engage the entire community in and something that in the end will begin to point the way for development of the waterfront over the next decades. I think that's my rambling and preamble, whatever. And I'm open to any kind of questions any of you may have.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Stasny. I look forward to meeting you when you're here. And I'm, I, I think I speak for everybody who's at the dais here. We're all very excited for this process to begin. So our downtown waterfront is certainly an incredibly cherished asset for the community. And it, it's certainly its full potential hasn't been realized. So I think this is a really exciting opportunity for Sandpoint. Council, any questions? Uh, council, any questions?
I'll start. Hi, uh, Mr. Stasney, Jason Welker here. Um, just a, just a couple of questions. From what I understand from your presentation just now. Your uh group will be tasked with beyond just a, you know, facilitating a design competition for the city-owned property. Also potentially uh recommending or suggesting uh ordinance changes that would. Apply to the whole area around the scent, the uh, the, the waterfront as well as that, correct? So it's, it's a little bit more than just, you know. Designing a park for us. It's also presenting us with a, a concept for. The path that development might take in that entire uh part of town. Is that, is that correct?
I, yes, I think it is. I, you're, um, it would not necessarily provide the. Legal language that might go into a code, for instance, but it will very definitely give the framework. For how you might uh influence both development uh as well as adjudicate development going forward.
Okay.
And we would, we would hope that that would be one of the goals that might be put forth by our committee. Um, our task force. Uh, so that um, it's kind of uh recorded in, in the, in the work that we're doing.
Great. Uh, and a, a follow-up question, this might be more for staff. Um, as we are updating our comp plan simultaneously with this. Could the product of this uh competition potentially be an appendix in our new comp plan? Or somehow like a chapter in our comp plan? Could we incorporate the results from this in our new comprehensive plan? So it becomes. Kind of a, a guiding visionary document for the next twenty years. Cause I assume, you know, when this competition is done, we're not going to have fifteen million dollars laying around to do all this work. But over the next ten, fifteen years, we, if, if it's in our comp plan, perhaps it's more likely to be fulfilled. Something Amy, you want to speak to that maybe?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Um, depending on the timing and how that works out, but we could always mend the comprehensive plan. Um, to include it as an appendix, but that makes a lot of sense.
Our process with this, the, the timeline with this is um for going out with the competition. The timeline that, that Don has set forward is we're coming back to council with this in. January, I believe of um, next year. Our comp plan, according to our schedule, is scheduled to be completed February of March. So. Um, we will have some of the initial information out of this, not the competition itself, but. That kind of design and input at that front end that leads to the competition before we're done with the comp plan.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great comments and questions, Jason. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I just, this is probably a question for Jennifer. Um. It didn't state in these recent um readings that council had, I know we probably um discussed this historically, but I don't remember off the top of my head. As far as the scope of the competition, um, from what point to what point on the waterfront. Um, will it encompass?
Actually, Don, we'll probably be best to speak to this, but I can give the overview of our conversation and also why my staff report. Referenced um the Farman's Landing, Sand Creek, and then over to uh City, City Beach and our concept there as well. Um, so when we discuss this project with Don, one of the decision points that will be at the front end and is part of this. Um, of this advisory committee and there will be also some internal conversations with staff too and the mayor before this. Comes back to council, will be defining the area for this competition. Likely that area is going to extend beyond Farman's Landing and be Sand Creek Waterfront over to City Beach. And waterfront there. And that's why when we've looked at too, when we're including. Property owners to participate again for purposes of buy-in with this discussion, we've included both downtown as well as. Property owners um over at the beach and um down to Ponderay Bay Trail. So, Don, do you, did I miss anything with that?
No, not, not really. I, my apologies in, in not mentioning that as part of the, what the advisory. Uh, our task force will do is um, help us define what the scope should be. And what the design area should be. And we also have some tools there that we can use. Uh, that we've used in the, in the past where there may be a, a central design focus. And then there might be an impact zone around it. And uh, again, we can. We can mold the design program in such a way that we have people address. Uh, things that aren't necessarily specific to the design competition, but impacts. And um, how things relate on the, on the other, you know, on, on another side. Um, I'm a firm believer through my urban design work that. You don't draw lines down the middle of a street because the street character is really set by. The structures on both, on both sides. And so you always want to include uh those areas around uh the study area. Which you might normally not think, think about. So for instance, the thing that, that. Lady was, was speaking about, about sidewalks and accessibility and those kinds of things. Should be considered in the, in the larger context of the design itself. Um, again, the um. Uh, Maeve talked uh, uh, early on when we were discussing this about. About watershed and, and things like that that might be included or thought about as. As this project goes forward. Um, so we eventually need to get this down to something very. Specific in questions of what we are, we are asking for, but that is, this is not the time yet. Uh, and in answer to the other question. I think that the design competition can give the kind of guidance that can be adopted within the, the comprehensive plan. Um, as far as uh, character and those elements that might be a part of, of a comp plan. So very definitely there will be input coming out of this. Uh, and while we probably won't, if we go ahead, we will not be finished until about mid-year. Uh, it can always come back in and amendment or something like that. Uh, however, as we go forward and with our advisory group, we'll begin to explore some of these ideas. So that as, as a comp plan begins to evolve, it can include those ideas going forward.
Mayor, I have one, one more quick question and this is probably. I'm sure going to be inclusive, but um, we are definitely a four-season type of environment. And so my concern. Sometimes when we always look at the artistic drawings, it shows the perfect trees and like early summer or. Spring with all the flowers and I see you laughing. So, you know. I, I would hope as we move forward through this, that maybe we um design it in such a way that it's also very functional to use. In the winter months here in Sandpoint and such.
Yes. We will do that. I, I, yes, uh. Now, going back to the architecture side of my business, it's. Always the, the pretty picture is with the fleet, the trees in full bloom and leaves and whatever else and. Very rarely will you see a, a uh drawing of mid-winter. With ice and snow and uh bear trees. But we in fact did one, did a competition for a creek in Austin, Texas. And we did get the seasonal uh pictures. Uh, not just what it was like during the, the summer months. Uh, but what it might be in the winter months or fall, fall months as well. So we can, we can take that advice and I. I agree, uh, somehow we will get that done.
I look forward to that winter picture.
Yep, Mr. Mayor. So, Don, it is nice to meet you virtually. My name is Andy. I am very excited to get to meet and know you better. And then to Jennifer, I appreciate. Uh, the, the competition aspect moving forward. This is a very, our town is very unique. Our people are very unique. This is a very unique and complex problem to try to find some solutions for. So, Don, um, speaking to the, the theory and philosophy. Of this, uh, when uh I was presented the material, it was like, who? With, no, no disrespect, but who is this guy? Who is he going to come in and tell us what to do with our town and all this kind of stuff? To try to get myself in the head of some of our citizens who are incredibly grumpy about change. Incredibly grumpy about some of the things that have progressed. And I invite our public to read your resume and read your accomplishments. You sir are no stranger to conflict. You are no stranger to building a team, bringing people together. Hearing voices, hearing equity, having respect and being inclusive, understanding that. The politics are what get in the way. And I look forward to the guidance of the, the teams that get put together and the community. That comes together to talk through and resolve this, mostly because we hear the co- up here. Uh, while elected, we hear the comments and the criticisms and often are told that it is. Our doing of this. This is an open invitation right now for our community and our. Our citizens to come in and speak what it is that they want. Potentially the next five, ten, twenty years of waterfront, waterfront to look like. So uh, I too can ramble and rant, so uh, I think uh, I again, I, I. I encourage everyone to read through your resume and understand uh that. We are on the precipice of great things. So thank you very much.
Well, well put, Andy. And, and uh, yes, um. When we leave, we want the place to be a better place. And it isn't dictatorial. It is process oriented about what the community wants, what the community wants to see and. Um, that there is something that can be sustained uh culturally and as a community. And you have my word on it.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing. Don Justin Dick, um, it's a pleasure to meet you electronically as well too. We understand that uh you were pulled out of retirement or potentially close to retirement prior to this project. What was it about the project or our community or Sandpoint uh that got you involved with this? And, and stopped you from your retirement moment?
Well, um, first, first of all, it's a bit of a misnomer because. People keep saying, are you retired? Are you retired? Well, not really. Uh, but what, what intrigued me about this, uh, and. Uh, Phil Kushling, who I worked with in Boise. Um, suggested my name to, to Jennifer. Um, I like small towns. I think that they are the lifeblood of our country. Uh, and I think that the problem is many times that. They tend not to bring in qualified professionals because they feel like qualified professional is going to push them around. Um, I don't believe that. Uh, I treasure the, the small town atmosphere. I treasure uh that. Here is a uh, a town sitting in a very wonderful area with water resources. Uh, is evolving and that what we can do. Uh, really is begin to impact what can happen over the next decades. So the legacy I would like left isn't what we've done. But what the impact of that is over the, the coming years.
Thank you.
All right. Appreciate that. Any other questions from council? All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stasney. Uh, look forward to working with you and um, you have a good evening.
I'll see you guys next week.
All right. The final item on the agenda this evening is a request from the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission. I will now yield the floor to City Planner Amy Tweet. Thanks, Amy.
Uh, so the planning commission, planning and zoning commission had made a request to city council. Um, to direct the planning and zoning commission to hold a public hearing on a proposed amendment to. Section nine, one, eight, B five, which is um accessory dwelling units. That would allow an accessory dwelling unit or ADU. To have two bedrooms versus the current code allowing one in the allowable nine hundred square feet. Um, and staff is requesting time not to exceed six months. To consider public input through the comprehensive plan engagement process. And to incorporate other needed code and potential policy changes regarding accessory. Buildings in general and uh ADU specifically. Uh, again, in April of twenty-one, the last change was made to the section of the code. That did increase the allowed square footage to nine hundred. And there were some additional clarifications of the code made at that time. In May, um, staff discussed with the planning and zoning commission. Um, some conflicting regulations that pertain to accessory buildings that include ADUs as well as garages. Um, really to seek direction on preferred methods of how possibly to resolve the conflicts. Uh, because demand for accessory buildings is, especially it's. Accessory dwelling units continues to be strong. We have a lot of demand, a lot of questions. And the, the provisions of the code conflict and depending what you're asking to do. So, uh, but just based on other priorities, the code provisions haven't been brought back to the commission. Um, but staff believes these need to be addressed at the same time as we're talking about possibly increasing. Um, bedrooms to accessory dwelling units. Uh, kind of a summary without going into the level of detail that the planning and zoning commission discussed. Um, some of the conflicts and potential issues, there are different setback allowances for garages versus accessory buildings. Uh, there are allowances for expansion and conversion of garages into accessory buildings. So you then have a building that was a garage that was under one provision and ADU. Is a different provision, which uh provision should prevail. Uh, insufficient definitions, the issue of. How is someone, how does someone know where the property line is? Are they finding their property pins? Should they have a survey? Um, what's the level of requirement for someone to actually build? Particularly an ADU, which is allowed to be quite close to a property line. Uh, parking accessibility, again, um, we know parking is always an issue, but particularly if. Use parking for an accessory building is off of an alley that is not maintained in the winter. It's not your own parking. Um, so just a consideration as we're moving forward and that potential utility impacts. A six hundred and fifty square foot, one bedroom may have different utility impacts than a two-bedroom, nine hundred square foot ADU. So just something also to consider. All of these kind of conflicting um parts of the code. Resolving difficult code administration and would benefit from additional discussion and public input. So, this is an exact, these, these three examples are where there's different code provisions. Um, regarding accessory buildings, garages or ADUs. So there's a provision that talks about. Garages are allowed to be one foot from an alley or a flanking street. Uh, then there's a section that talks about garages being required to be ten foot from a rear yard setback if they're. And twenty-five feet from the front property line. With a three-foot side yard setback. And then this, the specific section on accessory dwelling units requires a five-foot setback from the rear and the rear side. So when you have someone that first applies to build a garage. With maybe office space above, so they look at one part of the code and then down the road, then they want to do. And they want to turn the upstairs into accessory dwelling unit. It's, the, the structure is there. So there, the, the main discussion that was had with the planning commission was. It would be good to. it would be good to have consistency across accessory buildings. A little bit on the current status of accessory dwelling units. We pulled the permits from 2016 to sometime, just this month, we had, in that period, we've issued 60 building permits for accessory dwelling units. And as I've stated, there, there continues to be strong demand. Owner occupied properties with ADUs are allowed to become short-term rentals. And of the 60 permits, 15% have short-term rental licenses and 5% are on the short-term rental waiting list.
Can I ask a quick question about that? I hate to interrupt, but it's about that number. If it's owner occupied, why is there waiting lists? Aren't there, there's no limit to owner occupied STRs, isn't there?
That's a good question.
Or are those perhaps like a house that's not owner occupied and an ADU that's not owner occupied? So the whole thing's a short-term rental?
Right. So they're renting both properties.
Okay. And a, a point of clarification, would an owner have to have two STR permits if they had two dwelling units that they were hoping to rent on the same lot?
Yes.
They would?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you.
So again, we know there's demand and we know that accessory dwellings are a good way to increase density, allow housing. So staff, particularly Christine Coleman, the building official, has been developing a program to encourage ADU construction for the purpose of affordable housing. And just a brief summary of that program. In her statement, it's ADUs provide a unique opportunity to add housing solutions in the community. They're a way to provide space for family, friends, out of town guests and affordable rental unit and more. So two goals of the program that's being developed, one is to encourage construction of new ADUs to provide more housing and diverse options. And incentives that are being looked at for that would be pre-approved building plans that would be available free of charge. Expedited permit processing and reduced pre-construction fees. And a second goal would be to encourage conversion of existing accessory structures, structures, garages or potentially even attached to a house, taking part of a house to improve life safety elements where people are currently living in unsafe conditions. And again, those incentives would be pre-permit conversion consultation, expedited permit processing and reduced pre-construction fees. So those are all, Christine is working with builders and designers to try to come up with some of those plans. And so she will be coming forward with that program and potential policy changes of how to incentivize the construction of ADUs. So just in summary, I just want to emphasize that staff does understand the critical need for workforce housing and that ADUs are a piece of that. But it does happen times that you think what it's a small code change has unanticipated consequences. And therefore we're just asking that any changes to the ADU provisions be combined with these larger evaluations of accessory buildings and that a hearing occur following public engagement on housing and neighborhood character through the comprehensive plan process, but not later than six months.
Okay. Thank you for that. Counsel, any questions for Amy?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor. It's actually less about, I, I'm really excited about all of this conversation, community engagement around ADUs. I just have a question about the process of how this has come to us. And why aren't we just being asked to vote on a code amendment tonight rather than being asked to remand this to planning zoning for a public hearing process? It seems like that shouldn't, that seems to be an unnecessary step. You've done a fantastic job explaining the reasons for why maybe this just be bundled in with a comprehensive update to code. You've convinced me, but process wise, why aren't we discussing whether or not to amend 918 tonight like city council did a year ago? It's literally the same sentence in code with the increase in size from 650 to 900. The same sentence says one bedroom, no larger than 900 square feet. The whole, you know, the, the request that we ask planning zoning to hold public hearings to discuss this possible code amendment and then make a recommendation to us sometime down the road. It seems like planning zoning intended for this to be, they recommend a code change and we discuss it on its merits. We hear your presentation and we decide whether to change code or not. So how did we get to this point where now we're being asked to send it back to planning zoning for further deliberation within that commission? Maybe that's an Andy question or a Jennifer question.
Well, certainly council has the ability to make a decision to take action based on the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think the, the feedback that you are getting from staff and the suggestion of remanding this back to planning and zoning is there has been no public input, no public discussion about consequences or desires for neighborhoods. That has been a part of, of this process. And so the recommendation is to wait until we have those public neighborhood input processes to inform the drafting of code changes as opposed to just making a change without public input. At the time that the ADU code was developed, there had been significant public input into that process. And this has not been driven by a public input with public comment to Planning and Zoning Commission, public requests to staff for the two bedrooms. So that's what, that's why the recommendation is to go back and have a public process with this, but incorporate it with a larger code amendment. The reason initially that Planning and Zoning Commission and councillor rule may have been on planning and zoning at the time or, or the mayor hat, may have been my understanding relative to why ADUs were limited to one bedroom. There actually was a lot of public input on that through processes and it was related to the concern about parking and the impacts of parking on neighborhoods. So absent any discussion relative to parking, that's what's led to the recommendation on this process.
Okay. I, yeah, I, I guess that I understand all that. I'm, I'm just asking, what is, is there the, the process wise for, if, for, let's think about something completely unrelated to ADUs. If in the future, the Planning and Zoning Commission desired to recommend an amendment to his zoning ordinance. From, from what I understand, as long as it's not to a, a code or sorry, an ordinance that establishes zoning units for chapter one of Title IX, which applies across all zoning units, is it necessary to go back and do a public hearing? And the things that, the, the things that we were asked by planning zoning to recommend tonight, I'm asking, is that legally required or could planning zoning make a recommendation for an ordinance amendment without going back through a public hearing process on every amendment? Do you see what I'm asking?
I can address that. Counselor Welker, at the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission in August, on August 23rd, Fonda Jovic, I had, well, actually it was Zach Jones who was attending the meeting on behalf of Fonda had recommended that the Planning and Zoning Commission make that recommendation to the council because of the, and I'm kind of reading between the lines because I wasn't there, but I think they made that recommendation to bring it to council so the council would then take it up. And I think Jennifer makes a good point based upon the ability of council to entertain a public hearing and then go forward from there to make sure that we fully vet that process. I can't give you a whole lot more detail other than that, but I think it was a sound recommendation at the time.
Okay. I think this has been, this has been an unusual process where in this particular case, we had a single planning and zoning commissioner who wanted to make this change, wanted to put it on the agenda for Planning and Zoning Commission to make the recommendation to, to council at a single meeting, the first time this had been discussed. Typically when code changes are coming through Planning and Zoning Commission, we have our strategic plan through council. And so like comp plan, we get our priorities, our action plan that comes through stat. It really advises what are the priorities for staff as well as any commissions that are commissions appointed by city councils. So that's really our work plan for the year. And according to our work plan and strategic planning, and this is why you saw staff holding off on coming back with the code changes, the priority under a strategic plan was the comp plan and then go back and make code changes. That's where code changes got put on hold. So we were in process with ADU code changes and going to go back to Planning and Zoning Commission. And typically that happens through one or more, most, most commonly more workshops with Planning and Zoning Commission where it's noticed and the public has an opportunity to participate in those discussions before we're just moving ahead with code changes. So in this case, that didn't happen. Had it occurred the way that it originally came through, one commissioner wanted to just make a single code change wanted on the agenda for Planning and Zoning Commission to move and take to council. And there really hadn't been any public workshop, no public hearing, no opportunity for the public to participate, which is completely outside of how we normally function on planning and zoning. Typically we've got a list, an ongoing list of code issues based on people having challenges where we have conflicting codes and other issues. So we're doing code cleanup. We've had discussions with council about priority. And so staff is planning for an agenda on going to planning and zoning with code changes. Like one of our code changes that's been hanging out there for a while, we need to work on is food trucks. And that had come through discussions with council, council in the past. And so those come to planning and zoning or there is a discussion about what are broad sections of code like food trucks or sidewalk cafes or something, a larger topic that Planning and Zoning Commission wants to take up. And then staff begins to engage in conversation with planning and zoning amendments to code. And it works through a, a public process where the public is able to come and participate and provide input at workshops. So this was just a very unusual process and probably in terms of communication, wasn't handled necessarily as cleanly. But this was a one-off that we haven't seen. And I can't tell you when it's typically not the process for planning and zoning where again, a commissioner just comes in and wants a single change in code, wants to get on the agenda and that's moving forward. It's typically taken more robustly looking at code or we get into issues where we have conflicting elements of code and these things take time.
Well said, Jennifer.
Thank you. And Amy, thank you. That was for, for me coming in tonight, I, I had heard about all the contradictions around ADUs. I just didn't know what those were. So thank you for articulating all of those. And I agree that, I, I mean, I would ask you, is the option to increase bedrooms from one to two, something that will be considered as you revise this, this section of code?
Yeah, that'll be a discussion both at the engagement, you know, what, what are possible changes to ADUs? How do ADUs impact neighborhoods? That'll be a broader discussion. But yeah, that'll be part of the consideration.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So I guess my thoughts would be that we failed and really, what was the former planner that we were using out of Boise?
Darren.
Darren. And that we received guidance from him that it was just no big deal to go from the 650 to the 900 because of the, the general size of the garage, but it, it, so I don't feel like the council was guided very well from that, their former contracted employee because it didn't get vetted through planning commission on any level. And then it came to council and we made the decision without good enough guidance in that, hey, if you're going to do that, here's all the mistakes that you have done a wonderful job. And I really appreciate the diagram because I think a lot of people are visual learners and that you put it all out there. I think that's really easy for the public to understand. Well, let's clean up the mess and then we'll determine whether or not. My final comment would be, is I appreciate the six months and I know government moves slowly and there's a lot on your plate. But if we, as far as changing the pieces of the code and the comp plan pieces, if we can maybe sort of slide this towards the front end of that and maybe get it going a little sooner than that. Just because as we all know, and the public I'm sure is, is in on this, that we do have the workforce housing. It's the first sentence. It's right there in the, in the thing. So I don't want it to come out wrong, but if we can maybe not quite drag it out for six months, the public might appreciate that on some level. And I know it's part of the comp plan and there is a timeline for that, but if we can maybe scuttle it through a little faster, I think it would be appreciated by many different sectors of the population.
I would just reiterate, thank you for that question. For staff that, you know, we certainly had those discussions internally and I know staff is doing everything they can to keep our priorities in mind and make sure that we're moving through as efficiently as we possibly can with the priorities that were outlined by, by council in the strategic plan. So we had that discussion earlier this morning and, you know, maybe we can move that a little bit faster than six months. But I know Amy and everybody else in City Hall has their plates full. So are there any other questions for staff? Okay. We will not be entertaining any public comment on this matter this evening as we will have a public testimony that will be reserved for future public hearings scheduled on this topic. So with that, that concludes our agenda this evening and this meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we should vote on it. I entertain a motion to direct city staff to schedule a public hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission to consider amendments to city code Title IX within six months. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? So we will call vote.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Grob?
Yes.
Motion passes and this meeting is adjourned.